All right, I've got seven o'clock, so we'll call to meeting the May 17th regular meeting of the Torpens Springs Planning and Zoning Board. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Seaman.
Here.
Mr. Kuzkoudas.
Here.
Mr. Stavopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Vessi.
Here.
Ms. Veahill. Mr. Corianos. Mr. Andrew Otis.
Here.
All right, that's item one on the agenda. Item two is the approval of the minutes of the April 19th meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Andrew Otis.
Yes.
Mr. Vessi.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Stavopoulos.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkoudas.
Yes.
Mr. Seaman.
Yes. All right, that moves us on to item number three on our agenda, quasi judicial announcement and swearing of speakers.
This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Planning and Zoning Board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code of ordinances, in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Are there any of members of the board wishing to disclose any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak this evening, if you could please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or from the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So sworn.
All right, that that brings us to item four, Application 21-22. It's a future land use map amendment and rezoning for .61 acres of property at 41680 US Highway 19 North. Does the staff have a presentation?
Yes, I'll share my screen. This is Application 2122 for change to the future land use map and the city zoning map for property at 41680 US Highway 19 North. And this is a developed site. This aerial shows generally where it is and what some of the surrounding uses are. And it was most recently occupied by a furniture store. Tried to do a little bit more research today to to find out what it was originally built as and and I'm sure it's somewhere, but I didn't, I ran out of time, couldn't come up with it. But obviously, a retail type of building looks like it may have been designed for multi tenants if they need, if they wanted to do that. But the last use was a furniture store. And the applicant is requesting a change of zoning from basically an industrial designation to a retail business designation to allow the the current or the last use types of uses to continue. This is just an overlay of the survey on the property. And the request is to go from industrial limited to commercial general with the future land use map, and from industrial restricted to highway business with the zoning map. It's a little over about, well, just under two thirds of an acre. And again, it's built with the improvements there. This property, just to look at that, has access to Pine Street. It also has two shared access easements to the adjacent commercial property. And the access to 19, as you can see, is from the adjacent commercial property, so there's no curb cut to US 19 up here. And again, the request is to go to reflect what's the land use is now. This corner, just a little bit of background, the industrial limited designation kind of goes up this north end of 19 or what used to be more the northerly, less retail portion of 19 up to the Pinellas Trail, who's the old Seaboard Railroad. And along that Pinellas Trail, those industrial uses are established up there. This was kind of part of that older land use pattern. The biggest recent change, probably, I guess, 10, 12 years ago, was the establishment of the Lowe's hardware, which is that commercial general to the north that was industrial. So with that, the area has been kind of transitioning more toward retail, especially with respect to the US 19 corridor. Both this property and the AutoZone store are not really suited to industrial limited. They're they're conditional or nonconforming in that designation. The life storage next to that, for some reason, has got split zoning and split land use. It's got industrial and commercial. That would be more appropriate to stay in the industrial. So the subject of your your discussion tonight is only that corner piece. But we may be bringing to you in the future some land use and zoning changes for the other two. So that's land use, and this would be zoning. Part of the reason for that is the industrial is under what's called an employment category at the county, under the countywide plan. Once this application, if approved, goes forward, the city will be the applicant to the county to forward Pinellas for a change to that map. So in in order to help support that, we're looking at over the longer term clean, kind of cleaning up this, the land use on this corner. So as far as your criteria, staff has found that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This is a transitioning area and right along 19 is really a retail area. And it's most recently been occupied with a commercial retail use. This property is already served by the city. And so we have found consistency with the comprehensive plan, and we will be requesting a change to retail and services under the countywide designation. The available uses, there are several available uses for the highway business. It's probably our most, you know, longest list of uses allowed for any zoning, mostly because it's it's a highway 19 corridor type of zoning. But the property, again, is only two thirds of an acre, so some of your really intensive stuff is is kind of limited. And it's already developed. And staff is recommending approval of the future land use map amendment and of the zoning atlas amendment. And this was properly noticed, and we haven't received any responses to the notices. Are there any questions on this?
I have a couple of questions. What what are the the permitted uses that that by changing the the zoning to highway business?
We have a pretty long list of permitted uses. There's probably about 20 or 30 of those.
Let me, let me narrow my question. Okay. You know, one of the things I'm concerned about is, you know, when you look at a highway business, whether it's a, I don't know if this would be a conditional use, but adult entertainment. And I don't know by changing it to a highway business if that falls into a a conditional use or or if that is part of the the highway business zoning.
Adult entertainment is a permitted use, but
Okay.
It has its own special criteria under Article Four of our code. And I can look at that real quick while you're delivering.
That's a concern that I have.
Needs Board of Commissioner approval.
Yeah, that's that's a concern that I have by 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 doing that, do we open the door for that particular type of application?
Okay.
So I'll wait to hear your your answer.
Okay.
On that.
I'll look at that. And the applicant is represented here, so they can certainly discuss that.
Well, if the applicant, well, I don't know if the applicant wants to comment on that, but that's my concern.
Okay.
The the property, if I understand correctly, is is currently vacant, correct? And they're they're trying to correct the zoning as as part of trying to find a new tenant, I would imagine?
Yes, the the building is vacant. The previous use was the furniture store that would be conditional under the even the industrial, and that's been vacant for over six months. So there is no, currently no permitted use in the building. So that that's deemed to be discontinued, that conditional use. Any other questions for staff?
Oh, just the one I have out there.
Is if there's no further questions for staff, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Please give your name and address.
Jamie Mayer for the applicant, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 3700, Tampa, Florida. And I have a PowerPoint. Some of it will probably reiterate what staff has said, so I will go through those portions more quickly, so I don't waste anybody's time. Oh, can we share? Can we get my PowerPoint up there? Thank you so much.
Oh, let me stop sharing. Sorry.
Okay. So as staff explained, of course, this is a rezoning map amendment, and then, of course, the necessary countywide map amendment to follow. You know, as as staff explained, this is to basically clean up the zoning. We had tried to talk to the AutoZone to the south to get them to join this. They probably will end up joining later. My understanding is that's a big goal of staff, to clean up this whole area. And so this particular application is a step in that direction that staff is trying to go. As staff also explained, the site has historically been used for commercial and retail under a conditional use permit. And yes, it's been vacant now for about six months because the applicant is under contract to sell it to somebody else who wants to continue a commercial and retail use, but the conditional use permit has expired. And now it's either go in front, you know, have a public hearing for a new conditional use permit, or have a public hearing for a rezoning. From a planning perspective, I think staff would definitely prefer that we rezone it just to get this cleaned up. That's showing weirdly. Anyways. So this is the current zoning and the future land use that you saw. I have circled the site in blue on both, and as staff explained, there is some kind of weirdness with the property to the, I guess that's the west, where it's got two different zonings, but as you can see, there's this pocket of industrial in this corner that is not really in line with the surrounding area because it's bounded by the commercial uses on all the other sides and fronts US Highway 19. So the area is very commercial. I actually just drove by it on the way here, and you probably all are familiar with it as well. There's a Lowe's, the AutoZone, this liquor store, and a little further south, these are all zoned highway business. You know, there's restaurants, there's commercial shopping goods, Walmart. So generally, the kind of uses that serve daily personal needs of the community, shopping needs, and personal services. This is kind of a zoomed out view to show the highway business land or zoning category along that corridor. So you can see right under the, I think this has a pointer. Here's the site, and so this is highway business all along US 19. The second image is the countywide map, which shows their retail and services designation. Again, here's the little pocket of employment, which is clearly being phased out in the this area of the city. In contrast, this is, I think, what staff was talking about earlier, to the north. Also, at the intersection of the trail and US 19, this is where the industrial land use is still very much alive. This is where it's more appropriate. Here I've shown, oops, wrong button. Again, the countywide employment category and the industrial restricted zoning district. So these are uses like light manufacturing, distribution, packaging, printing, the kind of things that you actually expect in an industrial zoning district. I think it's important to note that when applying a new zoning category, of course, new dimensional standards will apply. We made sure that rezoning this is not going to turn the existing building into a nonconforming structure. So the existing building luckily meets all of the minimum lot widths, depths, setbacks. It's a single story building, so it's definitely not 35 feet in height, which is the maximum height, and it is well below the maximum floor area ratio. Now, this is a question about the permitted uses. As staff mentioned, yes, adult uses are permitted in the highway business district. So as you saw, there is a very long line of highway business district parcels along US 19. Gratefully, I did not see an adult business while I was traveling up to this hearing. However, that I'm sure our applicant would be willing to agree to a condition that we won't have such uses because that is definitely not the intent here. I think it's also important to note that since the site is within the coastal high hazard area, people might be concerned that zoning it highway business will suddenly allow a residential use to pop up. But that also is a conditional use within the highway business district, so it would require its own public hearing as well. So really, what you're permitted to do by right, that doesn't require an extra hearing, are things like restaurants, business professional offices, personal services, commercial recreation, shopping, and retail. The future land use categories are similar, so of course, the underlying future land use of industrial limited is focused on manufacturing, wholesale, storage and warehousing, and research and development. Whereas the commercial general, which is the underlying future land use for all of the highway business district areas that you saw, is for commercial uses, products, services, office, basically anything oriented to serving the neighborhood. Again, this is a zoomed in version of the countywide plan map. This pocket of industrial is currently has a designation of employment, which are areas that are for employment uses, primary industries, flex space, research and development. Whereas the retail and services that surrounds pretty much the rest of the area is, again, described as providing for the shopping and personal and service needs, which reflects the surrounding area and reflects what's currently or what has been previously provided on the site. I know in the staff report, the trip generation that is contemplated by these categories, employment is about 206 trips per day per acre, and I'm not going to purport to be a traffic engineer of any kind. But the retail services is higher. So while that would look like it was a trip generation change, since this site has been used as commercial and retail, it won't, it wouldn't change because it's just going to be used for the same thing, it's just going to have the proper zoning district on it. And as staff explained, this rezoning is going to be consistent with the comprehensive plan because of the growth of the area, the way that it's changed, and it's the uses in the zoning district are compatible with the surrounding area and the actual use on site. The site is already developed, so there's not going to be an impact on patterns of growth. In fact, the site itself is kind of a product of the pattern of growth in the area. And it will be continued to be used as commercial and retail, and so it's not going to have any real noticeable impact in the rezoning. So we respectfully request a recommendation of approval, and we are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
Just, I I still waiting to get the response because I know, even though your your client would agree not to do an adult establishment, it's a permitted right. Because it's, but I don't know what firewalls the city has in place because you have it, you have an apartment complex a few hundred feet away from from that location. And I'm sure there are families living, you know, within that that apartment complex, so I don't know what kind of firewalls the city has in place to unnecessarily restrict it permitted, right? But but at least put whatever firewalls that they have to to preclude that somebody's unlimited.
Respond to that.
Unfettered.
So to your point, Mr. Kuzkoudas, the the it is a permitted use within the highway business zoning, but it is done by conditional use permit. So while if you do agree to change the zoning in the highway business district, it would be a permitted use, but it's not necessarily permitted by right, it's permitted by conditional use. So it would have to be approved again.
All right.
Does that, does that make sense?
I, it's it's actually, no, but yeah, I understand it, but you know.
You got, you know, this board sees conditional use permits.
I know, I, because I know the condition use, but if it's
Right.
I guess my confusion, if it's a permitted right, how do you have a permitted right? But because of the type of business under the ordinance, it has conditions to it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, and my understanding, and Pat can correct me if I'm wrong.
And I don't understand why that wouldn't have been a conditional use. Instead of a permitted use, I don't understand why it wouldn't be a conditional use.
And I I'm sorry, I believe I misspoke. I had asked Pat, and I was, I am misunderstood, so I'll, I'm going to defer to Pat on that.
Okay.
And then, yeah, we can go back to Eric as far as some, yeah, what this means. So so it's listed as use permitted, permitted, that means by right. And then it says pursuant to Section 54 of the code. That's under your special provisions of the code. There's a whole section on adult uses. Basically, it looks like the process is that the staff reviews, Planning and Zoning Department reviews the proposal. And this, there's very specific items, a list of items that they have to show, including distances. In this case, we're looking at distances from a church, school, cemetery, childcare facility, or public recreation area. And then the staff issues a certificate of compliance or a certificate of noncompliance. If they issue a certificate of compliance, they have so many days to establish and open the business and that sort of thing.
You don't know.
I think some of this is related to state law that governs this.
I understand.
If a certificate of noncompliance, they can appeal that to the Board of Adjustment. And just the final thing would be, it appears, it's stated actually in here that highway business is the only zoning that allows this type of.
I understand that. That's why when I saw highway business, that that sort of triggered my my curiosity, but you don't know how many feet that is from a residential.
500 feet from preexisting residential and 1,000 feet from all the other uses I just listed.
Okay, so the fact that the apartment complex has a has a even though it's an apartment complex where residents are living, the fact that that is zoned commercial general, would that be deemed residential? Because it's a, because people are residing there, because they're they're, the apartment complex is under a different land use.
I believe it sounded residential.
I think from the map I'm looking at.
Just saying.
CG.
Yeah, on the one, on the one map, it shows multifamily residential, but on the other, like Mr. Kuzkoudas stated, it's commercial general.
And and just so you know, the applicant, I'm not necessarily opposed to this. I don't want you to think I'm opposed. And, and just so you know, uh, the applicant, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to this. I don't want you to think I'm opposed to this. But these are, these are concerns that I have when we change to, to highway business, obviously, you know, because I know it is a permitted use and I don't know, again. And let me show you what I'm talking, can I, I'll, I'll approach.
So, yeah, you're talking about, and I can share that screen.
When the rezoning or when the zoning designation, when the land use designation?
Yes.
And because it says GB, I don't know if you look at distances because it's not zone residential. Does that, does that apply?
I would say, um, and we haven't processed any of these since I've been here, but it says within 500 feet of any pre-existing residential land use property. That to me would, as a planner, I would say if it's being used for residential and it's existing residential, I'm not too sure. I'm concerned with the land use and zoning are.
Would, go ahead.
Question for, for our attorney. Is it within our purview to approve the application with the exception of, of not allowing adult entertainment uses?
Well, so the short answer is yes, because you're only making a recommendation to the board of commissioners who has the ultimate authority to approve or deny this application. More detailed answer is yes, but, um, as Pat said earlier, a lot of the adult businesses are regulated either by statute or, um, there is some first amendment concerns, not, not as many as there used to be. With that type of a business. So I, I would say, you know, do you want to make the condition? Sir, you can make the condition since it's a recommendation. But I would also just warn you that you do have criteria that you're bound to. So, um, the conditions usually only apply to those criteria, which are, are part of the application. So whatever condition you're putting it on there, just make sure it's, it's part and parcel to one of the criteria.
But it's not a conditional use. If you change the zoning, you can't.
Right, but you're.
Permitted use.
Uh, and I understand that, but you have the ability as the planning and zoning board to recommend approval or denial with conditions on the application to the board of commissioners for their, for their, their consideration. And then they do with that what they will.
Well, let me ask you a legal question then. Can a board of commissioners put a condition on a permitted, if it's a permitted use?
I don't understand the question. Like when this, if this.
If we, let's say, and again, I have no, I'm not, I have no problem with the application and probably going to vote to, to approve it. These are just my concerns. So when you have a permitted use, you have that right based on the, on the uses, subject to whatever state rules there are.
Right.
So how can this commissioners approve a, a highway business that has a permitted use to put conditions on something that is already a permitted use?
I didn't, I didn't say that the commission, the board of commissioners had that right. I said this board is the planning and zoning board. You make a recommendation to the board of commissioners. So you have the ability to condition it so that they can take that into consideration.
I understand that, but, but that's not my question. My question is, we do that. And then the board of commissioners makes that a condition as well. Okay. They, they adopt our, they, they adopt our, our recommendation. Okay. Even if they adopt the recommendation, because it's a permitted use by right, they can't put a condition on a permitted use.
Well, that's not necessarily true.
Oh, I've made.
You asked me my legal opinion. I'm giving you my legal opinion. I'm going to tell you what that one is, that's outside the purview of this board. So it doesn't really make a difference as far as this board is concerned. Two, both of these applications are quasi judicial, so you are bound to the criteria. And if you have a condition to put on the criteria, if you feel that it meets it, but there's a condition, you can certainly make that recommendation to the board of commissioners. Outside of that, what the commission does with it is what the commission does with it.
I understand.
And if I may add, uh, i- if you bring that to the attention of the board, they may, it may be something different. Uh, we have land development code changes that could, could, gonna be coming. Could be that they say, hey, we want to take a look at this section again, either make it more stringent or more, I don't know if they can get rid of it, but it might go along those lines as well.
I, I think if the apartment complex had a different zoning classification, it wouldn't, it'd probably be not an issue. So, but, um, you know, I've, I've, I've said my piece as far as the concerns that I have. Uh, and I understand and appreciate the fact that, that this property should be, the zoning should be consistent. I'm not objecting to that, have no issues with that. Just that my concern is that with the apartment complex there and the proximity, the zoning, you know, if somebody is, has a vacant building, they're going to try to get a tenant. And, you know, uh, you know, as a landlord, you try to be selective in your tenants, but sometimes you have no choice. And, and so, um, I, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Well, if possible, would it be possible to bring up the, um, the actual zoning map? Cause I would like to, I, I feel like I've seen over, I thought in my memory that it was on residential, if that would help. Um, but I, I don't know if the, cause I know that's the exhibit from the staff report, right?
It's, well, we could do that. It's existing residential. Commercial general does allow residential density in, I was just going to look at highway business. Highway business allows multi-family, so it's, it's not a non-conforming situation. You can certainly build residential in that future land use and zoning, which may be why they never changed it. You can get a certain level of density there and maybe that's what, but I, I could bring up the zoning map if the, the board wishes to do that.
I mean, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, horse, but you know, I, I respect your opinion, Pat. So if, if you're, if you're of the opinion that regardless of what, what the, uh, the, the zoning currently is, because of that is deep day residence, I will take your, um, your expertise on that and because it would be an outlier that would prevent that type of establishment from going in.
Is that apartment complex within 500 feet of the parcel? Is that apartment complex within 500 feet of the parcel? I mean, to me, that would be my only, my only thing because it's, it's commercial general and highway business. But if resident, multifamily residential is permitted use, the code is very specific that it's just residential land use, which that would be, but if it's not within 500 feet, it's irrelevant either way. But I think that would address Mr. Kuskudis's concerns.
I think the GIS has like a measuring tool if she measured the distances. I'm a big fan of it.
I'm, I'm familiar where the property is and if you go from property line to property line, it's, it's not 500 feet.
No, there's no way that's five.
That's not 500 feet. It's more like 250.
Actually less than 500.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I think that probably addresses your concerns.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to, yeah, cause the way Pat, the way Pat explained it with regard to, you know, my concern was because it had a, a general biz, uh, a general, uh, I mean, uh, what did it have?
Right. So it's not zoned R100. So therefore, yeah.
Yeah. That was my concern is that do they look at the zoning or they look at actually what's going on on the property?
And the code, the, the code as Pat read, it said residential land use. So since it's a multifamily residential land use, that would be considered residential. And if it's within 500 feet of that parcel, then that adult use could not go there.
So thumbs up. Thank you.
Yeah. And I've got the zoning map up and it's actually about, it's actually 200 259 feet away. So less than five. But here's the property here outlined. And then here is the residential over here.
Any other questions for the applicant? None. I guess you may step down and do we have any members of the public wishing to speak? Do we have anybody on Zoom wishing to speak?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
All right. Uh, that does it for public comments, I guess. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion if someone has one. Chairman, I'd like to motion approval of application 21 dash 22 as submitted.
I'll second that.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Was that Mr. Morgan that seconded it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Mr. Andrew Otis, I mean, I'm, yeah, Mr. Andrew Otis.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Vessi.
Yes.
Mr. Stravopoulos.
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudis.
No, for the purpose that I would want the rec, uh, recommendation for adult business.
Mr. Seaman.
Yes. All right. That brings us to item number five, application 21 dash 34. Future land use map amendment and rezoning for point one six acres located on the west side of distant avenue between East Lemon and East Boyer from future land use map designation residential medium to designation industrial limited and from zoning district R60 to zoning district one B or intensive business, I mean, IB. Does the staff have a presentation?
Yes, I'll share my screen. Okay, this one, uh, number 2134 is from Live Edge Labs. And this is located on distant avenue, just south of Lemon Street. And, uh, the applicant does own the property to the north there on the corner on Lemon Street and is already operating an existing warehouse there and would like to, uh, bring this property in to join with, with that operation, basically. So this is a closer look at the area and the uses around, uh, surrounding. Uh, we have single family residential to the south as, as a group of, um, basically some older housing on fronting, fronting on East Boyer Street. Most of the rest of this area on the north and aligning with this parcel are industrial or intensive business type uses. And you can see what those are surrounding the property. This is just a, um, attempt to put the survey over the property. Um, the house on the corner was part of that survey, so that's included. Sorry, it's not a house, it looks like a house that's been repurposed to a warehouse. So, uh, the applicant can maybe give some insight on that, but it, it looks like that's what it, what it was originally. And then the property itself that is the subject of this application has got a, an open pavilion or shelter on it that it looks like right now is being used for storage. So it's, it's basically not, not really developed. And you've got the Hoffman's mini storage over here to the west, the Mike's auto to the east and a single family residence to the south. So the applicant is requesting residential, um, sorry, is currently in residential medium future land use and R60 zoning and would like to, um, change that to industrial limited uh, and intensive business consistent with the surrounding, um, industrial designations. So this kind of shows some of the zoning and it is really a mix of zoning and a kind of a mixed area. Residential medium is, is one of those future land use categories that contemplates this kind of mix. A little bit higher density and a mix of even residential types of, of housing, multifamily. And then you've got some office general up to the north. Um, across Lemon Street, you've even got some heavier industrial over to the east, northeast. So this is kind of a mixed area. Lemon Street, I will mention, um, and let me go to the zoning map. The special area plan district starts over here to the west. And Lemon Street is one of those mixed residential, office, industrial kind of, uh, mixed areas contemplated by the special area plan. And it does kind of continue down here, uh, down that extra block over two distance. So this property would line up with the rest of that intensive business that exists now. So, um, this proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. City facilities are available to serve the property. This, uh, property would go to employment on the countywide map from a residential medium designation. So the city would, um, apply to have this, um, designated employment. And that's what the rest of this industrial type area is designated on the countywide map. Again, this is a mixed area. The intensive business is probably the least intense of our industrial type zoning. So we have industrial heavy and industrial restricted in those types of zonings. And the applicant is kind of proposing the least intense or impactful of that. It's a small piece of property. Um, so the uses that are available seem appropriate for this area. Uh, the applicant will have to buffer that southern property line from the neighbor. Put a vegetated buffer there and the applicant may be able to talk a little bit more about his plans for the property. Um, and there will be a full site planned required for this, so you will see it again. Depending on what the applicant proposes to do, uh, there is a narrative in your packet from the applicant on that. Again, this property is served by the city and, um, not expected to have negative impacts on the city facilities. So staff is recommending approval of the future land use map and zoning atlas map amendments. And we received one response from the public in support of the project. And I'll be glad to answer any questions on it.
Do any commissioners have a question for staff? Seeing none, uh, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Can I just get you to raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah, I just want to say on behalf of my son and I, thank you for your time tonight. And, and, um, we're here really to address the couple of issues that, that Pat brought up. The existing property was really disheveled when we took it over. And, you know, we're really happy to, to, uh, kind of make that corner look nice again. The area behind it, uh, probably for 30 or 40 years that we're contemplating putting the warehouse on was really used as, is almost like a junkyard by the former owner. It had a, a pole barn with just garbage grocery carts and things of this nature. Uh, old, old tiles and, and, um, actually had a bunch of, of, uh, monumental stones in it that the previous owner, we, when we bought the property, asked them to please remove everything. Um, and, and now we've got this vacant piece of land that I just can't ever see a, a home being built there. Cause what you got next door to you, you've got the mini storage behind it. You have, um, the, the Mike's auto repair across the street and of course us to the other side. Um, we think that we, you know, our business has been very successful. I started this for my son after he had a college injury. And we think that the, you know, the use of, of putting up a warehouse there, um, would, would be more consistent with the neighborhood. And, and quite honestly, not make it such a nice. or that it's been in the past. So I certainly thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, do we have any members of the public who would like to comment? Do we have anybody on the internet who would like to comment?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
All right, seeing no public comments, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve application 2134.
I'll second that motion.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Koulionos? I mean, I'm sorry, I have the wrong one up. Mr. Andrew Otis?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Stravopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right. One question I just realized on this one that actually would have applied to the first one, too. It was one vote sufficient on these items or do we need to vote?
Yeah, because the motion was made to approve the application as submitted. So, excuse me, so that was for both pieces, both the future land use and the rezoning.
Okay, very good. That brings us to item number six then, application 21-35, conditional use approval for the operation of a seasonal short-term rental at 12 West Orange Street in Special Area Plans T5D District. Does the staff have a presentation?
Yes, I'll share my screen. And this is a conditional use for a short-term or seasonal rental. This is located at 12 West Orange Street. And this property is listed as a general office type of use. So this will be a change of use from office to short-term seasonal rental. This is in the Special Area Plan District. And basically, the property is, was originally obviously residential. So it appears to comply with all the transect district standards for the T5D District. It has a fairly narrow driveway, but it's got parking for at least two vehicles, which is the minimum required. This is kind of the view of the property and showing the driveway, which is those, the two concrete paths there. And then this driveway goes to the property next door to the west. And this is an overlay of the survey on the property, showing again the driveway and the area for parking and there's area behind the structure for parking if needed. This, again, use is in the special area plan and it's downtown. It's between two properties that are either short-term rental now or proposed as such. And I'll show you a map of that. And it's in an area of mixed use and in that special area plan where these types of uses are contemplated. So what we have here is three approved short-term rentals. One over here on Spring Boulevard, but the other two here near the subject property. And then the blue are two proposed short-term rentals. Those are not under discussion tonight, but they have been to the DRC. So I just wanted you to be aware of their locations. Those will be coming to you at your next meeting. And then the subject property, which is right there at 12 West Orange Street. So it's situated next to one that is approved and one requested, right there in the downtown area. And as you remember, there are no distance separation requirements for short-term rentals in the Special Area Plan District. So this proposed use is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. This is a contributing altered structure in the historic district. The applicant is not proposing any exterior changes, but if those were proposed, they would have to go to the, they would have to be reviewed for historic compliance. And it's not on a environmentally sensitive site. Again, this seems to be consistent with the downtown area development pattern and it's not expected to adversely affect adjacent properties. The city's, the city already serves this property with facilities and so there won't be any negative impact there. Again, the change of use may trigger or will trigger some occupancy codes with respect to at least the fire code and perhaps the building code and the applicant will have to comply with those standards. I've, we've recommended approval of this use with some conditions and we didn't notice this publicly and there were no responses received. And this will, just for clarity, the applicant didn't state anything about the use or the number of occupants or any of that. This has to be a, as proposed, it's got to be for one family at a time. This is one dwelling and so it will be conditioned to be for one family at a time. Are there any questions?
I have a general question. I can understand the location of this property as being in the special area plan, but looking at how broad is that? Because we have, we have, we've done some of these short-term rentals, you know, pretty, you know, seems like all over the city it would seem. And so when you, when you say there's a, you know, a special, a special area plan, how broad is that area?
The special area plan coverage, we could look at a map of that. I can show that. In this area, it actually ends at this block. The Reynolds I showed you on Center Street, I can put that back up if needed. That's actually in the residential multifamily district, which also permits those uses, but...
I'm looking more at the one that's farther into the bayou along...
On Spring Boulevard.
Boulevard.
That one is also in the residential multifamily district. That district has distance separation requirements, but not from special area plan, just from each other.
All right, so the special area plan is basically the downtown area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any kind of limit on the number of these that we're going to approve?
There's no set limit in the code in the, in the special area plan or really in the code anywhere on the number. Outside the special area plan, there are distance separation requirements of 1,200 feet, I believe it is, between. But in the special area plan, there are no distance requirements and there's no limit to the number of short-term rentals.
Any further questions of staff?
Actually, I have a question for Pat and the attorney. My property next door and the one on Center Street, which have applications for, for this use were brought up. So I was wondering if I should recuse myself from voting in this.
Yes.
Absolutely, okay. Appreciate it.
Okay, if there's no further questions?
I do, I'm sorry, I was late to the party. I can't see the screen and I didn't have a package, so I was trying to look at it, but thank you so much. The, one of the first photos was of a driveway and an adjacent driveway. And to say it was a little bit narrow seemed generous. Is, could everyone maybe look at that and not pretend that that is actually a driveway? It just, just that it actually would operate as a driveway for two or maybe three vehicles that are going to come in and use it and they're not going to, you know, get in their neighbor's way or cause a conflict? Because that's kind of what we're looking at, is are we going to see any conflict with someone in the future that we could see now? I guess I can't tell from that photo what I'm looking at.
It's the two whites, the two on the right side next to the old fence?
Yeah.
Two things, that's the driveway.
And then what is the driveway to the left is not there.
That's belongs to the property.
And if you look at the survey that's in your packet, I didn't put a, I can bring that up without the overlay. You'll see those, the surveyor did mark those on the, on the survey.
So just to follow up with the other comment that it was actually both, that we might see a few more of these. Although we maybe say the house is grandfathered in, there are minimum distances for a driveway to actually act as a driveway and be treated in. Would that driveway meet that?
The transit code, the special area plan code does not have a minimum width for driveways. Our regular, you know, Euclidian code does have a minimum eight foot width for driveways. So that's why eight feet is recommended. And the applicant, I believe, is here and they can certainly address this. It's obviously been used. I don't know if the, you know, if they ever have a need to encroach on the property next door if there's an agreement or any of that, I wasn't able to get that, but...
There's also street parking right there as well.
That's correct, there is.
Okay, well, thanks for, this, this actually helps a lot. So then may I ask, what were the conditions that staff placed upon the application? Either that I didn't hear or didn't read yet that were specific to the house to make it fly?
The only condition specific to the house, well, or specific to the property, I'll put those up, that it remain a single-family residence. For the change of use, they'll have to address some fire code items. That's condition two and condition three. And then they'll have to obtain a business tax receipt for the use.
Thank you, Pat.
All right. If there's no further questions for staff, would the applicant like to comment?
If I could just swear you in, if you could just raise your right hand? Yes. Do you swear for the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Yes.
We had decided to do it in Airbnb because we were trying to rent it as a commercial and because of the pandemic and because of the economy and the way the working system has changed, it was very difficult to rent it commercial. So the neighbor on the left has an Airbnb and the neighbor on the right has an Airbnb. So we figured, you know, to do it as an Airbnb. And that's how we decided to do it as an Airbnb.
How many, how many resident or how many people staying at one time would be your maximum?
I would say about eight. I wouldn't want more than eight people. It's about four bedrooms, so I think that's more than sufficient. I mean, you could rent it to more people, but I just don't think that it would be wise as far as the driveway goes and the cars go, there's plenty of room on the driveway. In the back is about another four additional parking spots. There's parking spots in the front of the house, so I think it's okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
My understanding of the restriction is one family, though, is that correct?
Actually, it's a commercial, yes, it's a one family. It's a commercial before there were five offices. There were three upstairs, there was one in the front and one in the back.
All right, if there's no further questions for the applicant, do I hear a motion?
Going to ask for members of the public?
Oh, public comment, sorry. Skipped right over that. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak? Do we have anyone on the internet wishing to speak?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
All right, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Let's see, that 2135? I go ahead and make a motion to approve conditional use, well, conditional use 21-35.
With the conditions as stated by staff?
Yes.
And we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Stravopoulos?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right, that brings us to item number seven on our agenda, staff comments. Do we have any?
Yes, I've got a couple of things. First of all, this is our last hybrid meeting, so we will no longer be having Zoom with the meeting. And it'll, everything will be in person from now on. As you experienced tonight, we're no longer taking temperatures or any of that, so that's the change for now. This meeting room setup is staying the way it is as far as where the podium is and that, and the first couple of rows to be reserved. So that's, that's the only thing that hasn't changed. Also, I'd like to let the board know that the city has issued a request for proposals for update of the comprehensive plan. We've also put that up on our Connect Tarpon Springs community engagement. I'm going to be, I want, should have sent that to you today, but I didn't quite make it. But I will be sending you that page and that connection where we're already starting, we have a survey, we're already starting to get some response. And there'll be a whole lot more posted on that site and we'll keep you updated on, on our progress with that. The third thing is, we had at least one member ask again about board training and if the board is amenable to it. And, you know, it could be on any agenda, light agenda, could be something that we just look at and if it's too late, you could go to the next meeting, just some short kind of overview, for example, with the comprehensive plan coming up. I would be happy at the next meeting to give just a short overview of the basis comprehensive plan in Florida Growth Management a little bit to just to start to kind of go through some of that with you if, if the board's amenable to that. And also, just wanted to ask about packets. So when we went into the, the complete Zoom mode, you know, we don't, weren't doing packets because we were completely Zoomed. We asked, when we sent out the email, if anybody wants a hard copy to let us know. You can do it that way or if you want to let me know now who always wants a hard copy, you can let me know, but otherwise we wouldn't. So I guess, is that okay if you raise your hand who wants? So we've got at least three that want, four, okay. Good enough. And we can, like I say, anytime, email us about that and we will certainly... And, and we can, like I say, anytime, email us about that and we will certainly print. But we've been doing the eight hard copies and a lot of times throwing them away. You know, um, maybe somebody's not coming or something. Um, if you could just let us know, but we'll, we'll be sure to do four or five every time. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, number eight is board comments. And I, I would like to ask a question about number seven on the comprehensive plan stuff. Does this commission have an official role in uh adopting and, and overseeing that comprehensive plan production?
Yes, you do. Um, and that's part of what maybe with my first kind of little short training, I'll, I'll let you know. But yes, you are, you're the local planning agency for the city designated. So um you will have a role. And um I'll be glad to give you more details on that at the next meeting.
Okay, yes, I, I would appreciate the, that giving the, the commissioners the opportunity at least to be as, as involved with the processes they would, would like to be as, as the overseeing body that ultimately has to approve it. That way, hopefully, we have less difficulty reviewing it and approving it when that time comes.
Okay.
Any other board comments?
No.
Well, that brings us to item number nine. I guess we're adjourned.